Fletcher, is your mic off? Cindy, yours?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the December 16th Town Council meeting to order. Debbie, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Councilmember Figgy?
Present.
Councilmember Holdren?
Present.
Councilmember Marino? Councilmember Nock? Councilmember Oswald? And Councilmember Weitzel?
Okay.
We have Mayor Foskey.
I'm here.
I'm so sorry, Fletcher.
Pledge of Allegiance? Is it, we're rolling on, all the electronics are working as far as we know? Wonderful, okay.
Yes, sir.
Everybody can hear me? If you can't hear, please let us know. We'll try to speak into the microphones better. Minutes for the November 18th meeting, we have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second discussion, if anybody had any issues they haven't already reported to Debbie? All those in favor of accepting the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. There is no public hearing tonight, unscheduled. Public presentation and we're welcome, the CBs and Donna, if you can come up, please?
Good evening. First, I'm gonna say, please pardon that, I'll be squinting because my glasses fell off of the car. Sue pointed out. Anyway, good evening, thank you for allowing us to speak to you tonight. Donna Boz, Executive Director of Citizens for a Better East and Shore, CBs. For those in attendance who don't know us, since 1988, our nonprofit environmental organization has been committed to a sustainable future for this rare coastal gem we get to call home. Board member Gary Shreves is here and actually Sue Mastel is another board member. And we're here to share some good news about CB's 31st Between the Waters Bike Tour held in October here in Nantucket, our host town. And our host town is a huge reason why this year's bike tour was such a success. We know you have a packed agenda, so we're gonna want to share just the highlights of the tour. And we hope you will agree that your lead sponsorship of $3,000 was a good investment in your town and businesses. First, thank you to the council for backing the tour. Thank you to the staff, Matt was always available. He erased all mistakes before we could make them. We also wanted to thank the police chief Eric Williams, who helped us keep our cyclists safe. And high fives to Halloween Nantucket Coordinator Dana Simpson and team. There were so many activities, including the parade, which our cyclists had a blast being Bike Witches in. Historic Nantucket School, who actually opened their doors to us where we had, you know, the registration start finish on Friday and Saturday. Joni Donahoe for putting up with us and providing also the Pedal Empore, which was the first event on Friday night with Mallard's Restaurant. It was very successful. We've got a lot of great feedback from it and Joni was pleased too. The promotional power of your, of your, Nantucket Business and Civic Association and Nantucket Main Street, I mean, there, it was phenomenal. Yeah, which they, they both steered guests, cyclists and their guests to town businesses. And the good people of Nantucket, we also want to thank for sharing their hometown. Okay, let's share the good news. We send out surveys each year to our cyclists. We ask them to estimate the spending on the tour. We ask them what they spend on restaurants and meals, to estimate lodging, shopping and miscellaneous. And the total for the entire folks who attended, all the cyclists, was an estimated total dollars spent was $511,000. So over half a million in a long weekend, not bad. And these are conservative figures. Just to show you that, that was based on 245 survey results. And spread out again against all of our riders. That was an increase over $350,000 in 2023, so nice jump. And I think a lot had to do with it because the Nantucket has so much to offer, folks. It was a sellout with almost 1,200 registrants. And so where did these people come from that were in your, your businesses and your shops and your, you know, wandering around and cycling around? Well, the Bike Tour, Between the Waters Bike Tour is a true tourism event with 89% of cyclists from off the shore. 24 states plus the District of Columbia were representative, represented. The highest number of cyclists from Virginia, followed by Maryland, Pennsylvania and North Carolina. So how long did they stay? 72% spend one or more nights. As we know, the longer visitors stay, the more times they open up their wallets for their credit cards. And with all the amenities and special Halloween events, they had plenty of reasons to enjoy your town. What do they have to say about the quality of the Bike Tour, Between the Waters Bike Tour? And this is important to you all because, and to us obviously, but because it reflects on CBs, but also on the host town. 91% of cyclists said they were very likely to participate in a future bike tour. And 95% of cyclists said very likely to recommend to their friends, so we're very pleased with that. And I think it's a nice reflection on the town as well. So how likely are they to return to the eastern shore because of the bike tour experience? 89% said very likely. And new question this year, we asked, would their return visit include Nantucket? And I'm happy to say 64% said yes and 35% maybe. And Nantucket obviously made an epic impression. I just want to, it's always nice to hear what people say when they're in a town. And some of the response that we got through our surveys and talking to folks, it said, and I quote, "The town went all, all out to wrap Halloween events into the mix and it was awesome." Restaurants, another quote was, "Restaurants were busy, but they were staffed so well, we had a great meal." Another quote, "The decorated bicycles in towns were a real treat and Nantucket hooked us." Was the last, one of the last quotes we had. So lots of good feedback. Also wanted to say that you'll see in the back of your, of your report there. The promotion of the town goes on because the cyclists obviously have their t-shirts. Each one of them gets that complimentary t-shirt. And also the, the professional bike apparel that we sell, and that's the photos that you have. So you have cyclists walking or I guess cycling, you know, billboards for Nantucket. Little, little slices of nowhere else. So that goes on. I just wanted to close in saying that in 31 years of bike tours that we have done, this has, we've had many good partners, we have, and host towns. But Nantucket was really the first where the businesses embraced the tour and the people with amazing events and such passion. You have creative, smart, innovative people here who leverage the 1,200 cyclists coming into town. They made their stay memorable and I think the results speak for themselves. So Nantucket looked good and thank you all for making us look good. Thank you. If you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Donna?
Thank you.
So when are you coming back to Nantucket? Is there a cycle? Yeah, no, you don't, you don't, it's not. Cycle of cycling, yeah. Yeah. Right, yeah. But it seems like every three, four or five years, you're back in Nantucket.
Thank you. And I just want to say that I think it was so successful because it was such a grassroots effort. And everybody jumped on board and you're right, we have lots of creative, innovative, can-do type people, so thank you. We love doing it.
All right, moving on to council action, first item is the vote on the Nantucket Main Street lease. Matt, you have anything?
Yeah, we went through the lease with our attorney. He said it's a normal lease, there was nothing that caught his attention. He found a couple of small typos and said that it was good to go.
All right, do we, do we have a motion on the floor?
I move that we approve the lease agreement with Nantucket Main Street.
Discussion?
I'm totally surprised that we are going to accept this lease as written. Without any question about several of the, of the points in the lease. I want to start with first, I don't think a three-year lease is warranted. I think we should go with a one and then see where we go from there. The $1, the next point is number three on page eight, is a $1 a year. I think an organization, a separate organization like this should be able to continue to pay at least what they were paying at the school. Going on to page nine, utilities, that includes electricity, heating and air conditioning at no additional cost. I think that's unfair to the town and to the people in this town. I'm questioning also, I don't know, it's not clear to me on numbered, point number nine, where the sign is going to be for OMS and is it necessary for them to have Market Street visibility? And going on to page, number 10, OMS may sublease the conference room suite hourly, but shall bear all responsibility and liability for such sublease arrangements per the provisions of the lease. There's no, there's no clarity as to what you'll be renting those, the room, the conference room for hourly and what's the purpose? And if that's a fundraising, if you're raising funds, then you should be able to pay a minimum rental. A $1 is about insulting. Going down farther into number 13, I think it's kind of a, I don't know, it's striking it as, as superfluous because there are no public buildings that allow smoking. So to say that in the lease, I thought was kind of superfluous, just to go there. On page 10, on number 16, mutual indemnification, why carry liability if you are not going to be held responsible for anything that goes on there? And that's exactly what, if you read that carefully, that's what it says. There are different points in here that are just kind of pointless to add that as, as to nullify the, the lease. I'm still on page 10 and number B in section 17 says failure to pay rent. Well, if you don't pay a dollar rent, you shouldn't be doing anything. So I think that's kind of a silly comment to have in there. Failure to evacuate the premises at the end of a term of the lease, come on. Now, E on the same page says subletting, subletting any portion of the property for more than 20, 20 business days, that would be a violation of the lease. So then that means up to 20 days, you can rent the space out or sublet it. And it's not permitted by sex, by number 10, so it's just kind of contradictory. On going down further, on number 18, the termination of the lease. It says including any, okay. Upon termination of the lease, OMS shall peaceably and quietly deliver to the town possession office suite, including any fixtures that OMS has constructed. While you're not allowed to construct according to the lease number and section number five, you're not allowed to add anything to the building that becomes a part of it. The, and number 19, the town has no fiduciary relationship with OMS and they receive funds from TOT. So it's, it's, that's kind of not true. I think this, if the lawyers reviewed this, I am really surprised and really upset that this lease is being accepted as written. Thank you.
Any other comments about the lease?
Yes, I have some. I agree for this reason, I'm concerned that I know the, I don't know the title with the person who recently resigned, is that the project manager? Secretary, I don't know.
She was the program manager?
Program manager. So at this point, OMS does not have a program manager. And we are so thankful for the volunteers of OMS who put in countless hours to further this organization for the benefit of the town. So that questions why you even need an office if you, you know, but if you don't have a program manager. But I would be willing to vote for this lease under one condition, and that is that we not extend it for three years. But because we don't have staff at this point, that we make it a one-year trial period, see how it goes and then take it from there. I also am confused about the sublease. It, to me, I agree with you, Mafus, it seems contradictory that. So I would not want to see it subleased. I had the opportunity to attend a informative session with a member of Cape Charles Main Street. And she shared, I asked her and she was very, I've known her for a long time, and she shared that they have been paying $800 a month for an, an office. So that's $9,600 per year. And that's a Cape Charles budget, you know, they, they have an $11 million budget. We have a two-point something budget, so there's a lot of difference there. That would be used, I think, if we do lease this in-kind. Isn't that what you call it, in-kind? Yeah, that we would give. So she also shared that they've been paying that since their formation and now they're hoping to construct a visitor center and they will move the Main Street into the visitor center, just like we're doing. I also agree that the town that does have a fiduciary relationship with OMS and it comes from TOT. OMS feels they don't receive enough funding, I understand that. Maybe Matt can sharpen his pencil to come up with that and so that it can be considered. But truly, I think we should put this on a one-year basis and see how it goes.
Any other comments?
Actually, I do. Actually, I do, and I would like to say that, actually, I agree with Mafus, with our council member Oswald and council member Marino. I think that my objection, I agree with the one year, I would prefer a one-year lease. And the other, that I could support the lease if we just had a nominal $200 or $300 monthly payment. And let me explain why. With, for those of you who are old enough to remember, with FOS, it was $1 because they were going to generate funds to rehabilitate the building. And so that's why the town recognized that that was quite a, quite a, an issue. And so it was a $1 nominal fee to make it legal. I think with, with Main Street, it's, the building already exists. And so, you know, a $300, $250 monthly rental payment, still all-inclusive, would make it so it's not a negative drain on the town budget. And I think it would also, and this is my little accountant's heart, I suppose, or whatever. And that is, is it might encourage even more activity toward generating funds outside of town, outside of the town budget. Because I think a Main Street is a great idea. I think the people who work for it are doing it with the world's best intention. And I support it, I just think that I have to think about the rest of the town. So in summary, $250 to $300 a month, monthly rental payment, all-inclusive, and then a one-year lease to be renegotiated.
Any other comments?
I have comments, but Sarah, if you want to go first?
I have a couple of observations. One, I suspect that the item under the Department of Remedies about subletting may be left over from when there was a mention in an earlier draft that Main Street would be allowed to sublet the space. And that that may just need, that line may just need to come out.
Yeah.
I believe that we, we left that in because we didn't want them to sublet for consecutive days. But they could rent the conference room by the hour as they choose.
They're two different things.
Could you show us where that line is, please? Under 17E.
Okay, thank you.
Does this, does, okay, there's no qualifications for the sub, the hourly rental. And so are you saying that you could rent it for four hours for a party? Or are you only renting it for business purposes?
I think that's up to the organization.
Excuse me?
Up to the organization.
There are no restrictions there, which is why I'm asking the question.
Our current plan, and I'm also, just for FYI, I'm the board president for the Nantucket Main Street Organization. I'm also a town council. We don't have any immediate plans to do anything with the conference room except use it ourselves. We have been putting out funding or programming aside because we haven't had a designated space to utilize for these programmings that we want to do. If it's a deal breaker, we're happy to take it off the table. And, and, and second of all, it would not be a fundraiser for us. It would just be a nominal fee for cleanup and the use of our equipment.
It would be, it would, it would be a positive direction. It'll move the needle in a positive direction. It would, or net out any expenses incurred for, for doing it.
Right.
The other thing to say, which we talked about last month, but as a reminder, and Joy, I'm a little bit confused about your mention of an in-kind, I think it was you who said an in-kind contribution. In effect, the $1 lease is an in-kind contribution of the town to Main Street because the town of Nantucket is the lowest in terms of support to its Main Street organization of any across the state. And this would bring us into the realm of what the expectations of the state and national Main Street organizations are. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
What are the expectations and that you just mentioned, what are they?
I don't know the numbers.
Yeah.
We have been provided with them in the past.
Yes, yes.
If you, if you look just at dollars contributed, yes, it looks terrible. But if you look at population and budgets, it's, it's a little different.
Probably.
Charles actually has the same population, basically, we do. The difference is they have a budget that's four or five times, maybe six times larger than ours. So that is a reflection.
But there's a minimum amount that needs to, to get the organization going, so if you have a tiny town, you need.
Are we meeting that minimum amount?
Well, barely, that's the point. And this is an opportunity to give them a several thousand dollars more a year if you, I don't know what the rent would be on this market value.
Well, we do have sort of an idea because as Mr. Spuck shared, the little office, very small little office, was rented for $700 a month to a business, so.
I've, I've got several buildings I've been trying to rent and nobody's been too interested in that fund.
That's, that's.
But the point is, if you look at square footage, you know, the market value of $12 a square foot, you know, it's $400, $500 a month, it would be.
May I take a brief moment to remind everybody the purpose of Nantucket Main Street? We are not a business, we are a 501(c)(3) and we operate to the benefit of the entire community. Yes, we have a downtown district that gets slightly more, but we actually do the marketing for every single business in this town. And we get a lot of, we've been doing a good job.
We agree.
Could I make some comments now?
Yeah.
In response to your point about not having staff now, we are in the process of filling the position and have every expectation we will do so within a month or two. We're reviewing the job description and rewriting it, updating it, and then we'll publicize it. So this is just temporary, normal business to not have a staff person for a short period of time. The other thing that I would comment about the $1 amount of the lease in response to Paul, Mafus and Joy, I think when you're requesting an additional amount for rent, you're ignoring the past benefits that Main Street has brought to the town. Many, many more dollars than the town would have expected otherwise. And so I see this as kind of a way to support past work as well as future work. We all know that the Liliston Building would not be in the condition it is today without the work of Main Street. So that $1 million that the town will be able to use to help reconstruct other buildings would have never happened without Main Street. And so I don't see this support in the rent as being unreasonable in any way.
Don't you think that that building would have been redone because of the lawyers that put that package together?
Sorry, we didn't hear your question, I'm sorry.
I said, don't you think that the Liliston Building would have come through and done, been constructed or reconstructed because of the lawyers group that started that program?
The reason they started at Mafus was because Main Street did a financial study and a marketing study to prove to any developer what could be done. It could not have happened without that. So in response to the discussion and with Lisa's agreement, I'll amend my motion to omit 17E.
If, if Main Street decides in three years when we're renegotiating that it is something we'd like to open up to the community at a very small fee, then we can discuss it at that point. But if, if it's a deal breaker now, we'll be happy to remove it.
Well, it's either in your lease or not in your lease to do that.
But we have to renegotiate every three years.
She just, she just.
I just changed my mic.
Just changed it, eliminated that.
You also need to add on page nine, under 10, I think that sentence has to come out also. Page nine, number 10.
Exactly right.
So are you saying there will be no renting of the office space at all? Or subletting the entire space at all?
We're saying, I'm saying, no subletting.
Does that mean renting the office space, meaning the conference room, for a few hours? Are they allowed to do that?
No.
Okay, so when I said renting the conference room or subletting the entire space, they're not allowed to do either?
Right. We are leasing this to Onancock Main Street.
I just want to make sure I get it clear so that when I put it in front of the lawyer, I get the words right.
So there, before this.
Can we proceed, Matt, with approving the motion or not?
If you take it out, you get.
You take it out, yeah. If you, if you say you move to remove item 10.
10, yes.
And then 17E.
Matt, to clarify, second sentence of item 10. Oh, no, the whole thing. The whole thing. Don't you want to keep the sentence that says that OMS agrees not to sublease or share?
Yeah. If you're silent.
Now you're going to remove the second sentence. Remove the second sentence.
Second sentence of number 10.
And remove E completely. Remove 17E completely.
Well, we could say subletting any portion of the property, period.
Okay, okay, oh, right, right. Okay, right, you're right, sorry, okay.
Do we agree to the one year?
That.
Main Street does not.
Main Street will not amend the lease to one year. It's, it's pointless. That's a lot of expense for us to move furniture repeatedly. I know you have a furniture donation. That's great, wonderful. But we'll have to pay to move it. I don't imagine. Anybody else is, it's just.
Yeah.
The lease is renewable. And it's even in here that, subject to the willingness of the council.
I have a motion.
I call for the question.
Excuse me, I'm talking right at this.
I know, I'm trying to cut you off. That's a first, that's a first. I understand it's a point of order if the mayor calls it. Point of order from the mayor.
I'm saying that the one-year lease works for us. It will work for you because it's renewable. There, there's, there's nothing, there's no breaking the lease. You're doing, if you're doing all that you're saying you're going to do, and you have your staff in place, and you're, and you're doing all these wonders for the town, who would be crazy enough to say no?
I think three years is, is more than enough, is substantial. It'll be here in a blink of an eye. I don't see why we need to do this annually.
No.
I, I, I disagree with that.
Any other call, call, call? All right, you're going to call the vote?
Yes.
Call the, the roll call vote.
Councilmember Figgy.
Aye.
This leaves. As, as, as the two, as the two amendments.
Councilmember Holdren.
Aye.
Councilmember Moreno.
No.
Councilmember Noc. Councilmember Oswald. Councilmember Whitezel.
No.
I, I vote aye. Thank you.
Okay.
Vote on the application for coastal residences to connect the town water. Matt?
Yeah, we have talked about this for a few months now, so the presentations have all been made. The due diligence has been made, and the follow-ups have all been made. I made a presentation last month, I believe, that proved all of that. So the question before council is, do you approve the application as presented for Coastal Square and Residences to tie into the Onancock drinking water system?
Okay, do we have a motion here for that?
I'd like to make a motion to provide water services to Coastal Square and Residence LLC located outside the town of Onancock limits.
Second, any discussion on this? Okay, roll call vote.
Well, 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 I was being polite and waiting for other people, but yes, I do have a couple of points. I see that in this, we are, it is with 465 residential units, so that is phase one, right?
No, phase, phase one is, that 465 is the total of all 14, I believe, phases.
Because on the next page, it says 203 residential units, so which are we approving here?
You're approving all 465, so they don't have to come back.
So that's phase one and then phase two?
And phase 14 and everything before it.
So there will be no more than 465?
That's what's approved by the county. That's what their number is. We're going to provide an eight-inch main line tie-in behind Coldwell Banker. That's all we're doing.
465.
We're putting in, you know, the number of meters that they, they require. But, you know, I don't know of anybody that's going to top it off at 465 if they've already been approved for up to 465. I don't understand the question.
I just wonder how many units we're supplying water to. I was confused about the two, three, and the 465.
No, it's up to 465.
It could be up to 465 at some point in the future.
Oh, it'll be a long while.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, at some point in the future.
Okay. You can imagine how thrilled I was, Mr. Spuck, to receive this DFB report, since I've been asking for it. And boy, is it informative. What concerns me about it is, I think, I think we definitely have the water to do this, based upon my simple math. But what concerns me is when you get to the page four of the DBF report, this is what they recommend. There's a lot of recommendations here. And you said in past meetings that the out-of-town rate will really work to our benefit. Well, I checked, we don't have an out-of-town rate. So we would have, yes, exactly, we would have to adopt an out-of-town rate. Do we have?
In the next budget cycle, and the last budget cycle, one was presented to you.
But it's not part.
It's not part of our operating budget because we didn't have any new out-of-town subdivisions yet.
Okay, so do we have any out-of-town customers at this point, right now?
Yeah, we have the hospital and the Commonwealth senior living.
What about the houses on Liberty?
No, those are inside of Onancock.
Okay. So is our profit from the out-of-town rate going to be consumed by this two pages of things that need to be done?
No, if you, if you look at that, they were trying to make it more operator-friendly.
Yeah, some of it.
Because it, yeah, some of it, but that was, you know, adding a, a pump system that's not manual or is less manual than it currently is.
I understand.
Things like that. So, you know, again, yes, there's recommendations. And yes, you know, the increase in volume will help all current residents and future residences. And it'll help the town by putting some of those recommendations in place.
Water is very serious, you know, and I'm glad to see that we have, you've diligently gotten the approvals that we need to do this, to the point where I'm comfortable to say, yes, I think we can do this. I don't think it's going to happen, from what people are saying to me, that the likelihood of it happening is slim. Time will tell. None of us know that. I just never want to see headlines like we recently saw from X Moore about the issues with town water. And I would like to raise in the future the possibility of having a water engineer. I think that that is important, that we have somebody who's certified, and we're not just using somebody's license, that we consider that for this upcoming budget. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes. I too am concerned about the number of units. I would, I would so much prefer that we could approve the initial phase of, what, 203 units? Yes. And kind of see how that went. So I guess my question is, is this something we could approach the developer with and say, there's feeling that we could potentially agree to this, but we would want you to come back for additional units?
Well, they've already been approved. But we don't have any voice. Right, but we're going to let them tie an eight-inch line into our 12-inch line. That's the extent of what we're going to do, and then we're going to bill the people who use it.
Doesn't the county give them the permit to build how many units?
Yes, they do. We don't have a voice in that.
We have no control over that.
No, what we, what we would do is you could sit there and say, we're only going to sell you 203 meters. At that point, if I'm the developer, I, I have issues.
Well, I mean, is it possible for you to talk to them about that?
Is there a motion on the floor?
No. Yes. Yes. I meant to that effect. I'll second it.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, isn't there? Didn't Lisa make it?
The application, yeah.
We already have a motion, prove the application as is.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Lisa made it second it.
Is that what yours, so you want to keep your motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, now let's vote on the motion.
I think Sarah has.
Comments?
Just to say, if, if we turn this down.
I'm not sure your mic's working. Do people hear him, Sarah? I can't hear you. I, you know.
Her mic is fine. I just think she needs to.
Yeah, you're not leaning to it. Go ahead.
Pull it closer.
It's dead. Is that better?
It's not working.
Do you have it on?
It's, the light is lit.
Interesting. Okay, try this.
That's perfect.
If the, if the town says no, and the developer proceeds to dig wells, the water they would be pulling is from the very same sources as the town's wells at no offsetting of cost of the oversized water system over ambitious that the town built years ago.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, any other comments? Uh, okay, uh, roll call vote.
Councilmember Figgy.
Aye.
Councilmember Holdren.
Aye.
Councilmember Moreno.
I'll abstain.
Councilmember Noc.
Aye.
Councilmember Oswald.
Aye.
Councilmember Whitezel.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Not until we say it, yes.
All right, the next, next item is the project to accrue for ARPA by 12/31/24. Matt?
How deeply do you want me to discuss this?
I, you know, it's up to council, not me.
I know.
What's the question?
How much, ARPA, ARPA funding?
We want to get into it.
Yeah.
Matt, you sent out a late afternoon summary. And you said you were going to read that into the minutes. So would, I think that would be a good start, and then we can go from there, if that's okay with you.
I'm, I'm happy to do it. I got a return mail from the mayor that said he was perfectly fine with encumbering the six remaining projects, letting everything go as is, where is. So if I don't, if you don't want me to read four pages.
No, I, I, I want to understand. I, I disagreeing with what you were proposing.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, is that originally.
But it's not up to me.
No, I understand that. That's why I'm asking if you want me to read.
No, I definitely, definitely do, yeah. I was applying for myself, not, not.
No, I understand.
Yeah, I thought there was some confusion between you and me, that I had no problem with the, with the things. I, I thought that we could use ARPA money to pay us back for what we overspent. And when you said, no, let's go back to the original projects, and now that looks like we can get them encumbered, sounds like a good plan. So let's hear it, yeah. That's my, yeah, if that's okay with you, yeah.
It's perfectly fine with me.
Yeah, no, I'd like to hear, no, you should, you should say that, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The use of SL-FRF, which is the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, which is part of ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, is expected to meet several purposes. The purpose is listed from, in the Department of Treasury's final rule that most closely fit our needs, our long-term support for small businesses and investment in outdoor spaces, such as parks and public areas, to promote a healthier outdoor lifestyle. By supporting businesses and promoting quality outdoor space, we become a healthier community, which is the core purpose of ARPA. Onancock has managed its resources and infrastructure very well through the last years. And as a result, the town didn't need to use the funds for large infrastructure programs like many small towns were forced to. The Onancock Town Council approved 23 projects to be completed using the $1.2, $1.3 million given to us in SL-FRF. After the Treasury distributed the funds to us, the DCJS, which is the Department of Criminal Justice Services, issued an additional ARPA grant that allowed us to reappropriate funds set aside for the town grants to, the funds received by the DCJS grant. That was $195,000 that we were able to take from the initial ARPA funds and move it over to the DCJS ARPA funds, which allowed us to have more cash for construction of places like the Welcome Center and Police Station. This allows us to face the future resident business-facing and visitor-facing projects with budget pressure. The SL-FRF funds must be encumbered in total by 12/31/24 and spent entirely by 12/31/26. Encumbered means set aside with a firm commitment. The council member and the mayor suggest that we not complete these six remaining projects and replenish the operating cash to replenish the excess costs of renovating the Welcome Center and Police Station. The final rule states that no ARPA funds may be used to make deposits into any rainy day fund or financial reserves. We use both ARPA funds and operating funds to complete the construction. The effect that by re-appropriating the funds of the renovation costs, we'll use ARPA funds to replenish reserves. Our, our practice is to transfer all operating funds not in use or needed within 60 days to our idle cash fund, which allows operating funds to earn interest. I strongly propose that we formally encumber these six remaining projects. We have all the quotes for them, and according to both our attorney and VML, all we need to do is issue purchase orders to the vendor that commits or encumbers the funds that meet the SL-FRF requirements. The six remaining public-facing projects have been included in the monthly report, and management has been preparing for them since the onset of ARPA. Page 24 of your report shows that we have 208,658 remaining to spend or encumber by 12/31/24. And as stated, we have quotes or commitments for all six. So let me describe those projects to you. The air conditioning for the second floor of Town Hall is complete and paid for, reducing the amount to encumber by $20,000. The Business Facade Town Grant is complete, except for the farmer's market, which received a grant commitment from the town for signage, but they haven't purchased it yet because of the future relocation of the market. They wanted to get specific signage. I can write them a commitment letter to the market to grant the awards, which would encumber those funds. The quotes received for the pavers at Sunset Park were too high to be considered reasonable. One of the bidders suggested that stamped concrete might be a better solution for that location, and given the, given the occasional flooding. The quote for stamped concrete is $42,000, and adding the remaining asphalt ceiling and striping work totals $51,000. This spot that many, if not all, residents and visitors visit and take pictures of the sunset over the creek. We designed and installed the deck boards with the grant we received for rebuilding the bulkhead. There's a step up there because we, eventually, we're going to construct this Sunset Park where the bricks or cement will line up with those deck boards. Currently, there's a step up or a trip hazard, whichever you'd like to call, and we're going to need to deal with that anyway, regardless of the encumbrance in the project. So completing this project will remove that trip hazard and give transient boaters a place to sit and provide a dedicated space for every person enjoying our sunset. Number four is, did downtown visual improvements include a new entry sign for $77,000? And benches and trash recycling for $6,400, coming to $83,400? The town council eases the financial pressure on the Queen Street project by approving this encumbrance. The Queen Street project is budgeted in this year's fiscal capital budget. By encumbering the entryway sign from the amount from CIP, the town council could either reduce the CIP budget for the year or reappropriate these funds to the Queen Street project, which could, for example, provide six, five, rather, streetlights for that area using the same dollars. The town square renovations include six streetlights that would be along the sidewalks. These are the ornamental streetlights that our residents approved and voted for through the survey. The streetlights along the sidewalk, an irrigation system, and grass restoration. We've gotten a lot of negative feedback about the condition of the grass. Uh, we've gotten a lot of negative feedback about the condition of the grass in the center of our town. So that's why that's there. Uh, any new plantings or beds would be funded from our existing operating budget. We put that money in there anyway, so there's no additional burden on the ARPA funds or on the residents. Um, and we also, uh, received a generous gift of time and talent from two folks who would give us free design, uh, support and, and, uh, also the tree board. So we're blessed to have that. And the last item that we would encumber is for the new basketball court in the Northeast Nitro Park. Um, the cost of that, uh, rose, the cost of the basketball court increased uh, because of tree roots under the existing court that can't be removed without killing the tree. Uh, so we would turn the court 90 degrees and move it to the north, uh, slightly, getting out of the way of those trees. But because we'd be doubling the size of the paving project, we would be increasing the size of the, of the budget. Uh, in order to do that, we could take the $8,400 that's remaining, uh, from the other projects and we equal 208,000. Uh, so those six project equal the 208, and like I said, we have quotes for all of them. Uh, so the question on the table is what if Town Council decides to, to follow the suggestion of the council member and mayor who suggested leaving these six projects undone, but assured them that they would put it in CIP? Our CIP is voted on annually in a five-year CIP budget. These funds come from reserves and town income, mainly tax revenue. Adding $208,000 to our operating budget for this additional CIP would require a 50% increase in real estate taxes. And that's obviously keeping it simple, keeping it all in one place. But $208,000 increase to our operating budget would be dramatic because of the number of revenue items that we actually control. So that $208,000 in our operating budget would be incredibly high. Uh, given the town's other priorities, increasing taxes to this degree for projects like these will likely never happen. Having federal government provide debt-free money to municipalities like ours again will also likely never happen. So the projects were initially approved by Town Council and planned for since then, uh, the deckboard installation would be an example and need to be encumbered by the end of this month. We have everything in place to do so. Budgeting for ornamental streetlights and irrigation systems for a well-cared-for town square, adding a new and ample space for boaters, visitors and residents to enjoy the most beautiful spots on the shore, and creating an entry sign that speaks to who we are and differentiates us from any other town are not projects that find a home easily on most tough, small-town operating budgets. With these projects completed, we invite and encourage people to be outdoors in our historic district. People who spend more time outdoors are healthier than those who do not. With more people outside in our downtown area, businesses will prosper. Supporting healthy living and supporting our business owners both speak to who we are. Please authorize me to send purchase orders to the vendors who can make these projects a reality. Thank you.
Uh, I, I, uh, I had a question. The amounts right here were, were, you know, for the, for the first three were listed, but for the town square, you said it, it comes up to 208, but it's not, I, so what's going with the town square?
Town Square is 83,371.
83.
Oh, I'm sorry. Town Square is 53,000. Downtown visual improvements are 83,371.
Well, you said.
The details on page 25.
I'm sorry, and the basketball court was, uh.
Yeah, the basketball court was the filler at 88,90.
88,90.
And I believe would remain a filler. If we underspend any other areas, we'll be able to use those dollars to finish the northeast basketball court.
Yeah, I, uh. I, I still want to follow up on this, you know, uh, the, the, the line that says, I suggested, the mayor and somebody suggested leaving these projects undone is, I didn't think we were getting, going to be able to get funding on ARPA because there was a, you know, that, that we weren't going to be able to get them encumbered by that time. So I said, if we don't get them encumbered, what can we do with the ARPA fund? I suggested we roll it over and to pay for the overruns on that. So I was never suggesting that we not do these projects. I thought they weren't going to happen because we weren't going to get them, but it looks like we can do, uncover them, which, which no problem. So I have no problem with that. Uh, so that's my comments. Uh, anybody else? Yeah.
I have one comment, um. Mr. Spuck? Um, on your ARPA project cost, um, update sheet, that's through November 30th, um, you've got 208,658 left, left remaining to spend. But if you look at your ARPA remaining accrual, you're over $8,890. You've got 217. And what I, and what it looks like might have happened is that 41,000. Sure, sure, sure.
Paige, are you on?
Oh, I've got my own notes. I apologize. Um.
Fine.
So it is page 24 and 25.
Okay, so you're saying his remaining to spend is 208,000? And then what's your next one?
On the first one, on the first spreadsheet, and on the second spreadsheet, I got a total of 217,548. And what I think has happened is if you take on the first spreadsheet, Matt, under Sunset Park, you've got 41,730. And if you add 8,890, it gives you the 5620 that's on the second spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure we know what we're spending.
Uh, any other comments on this?
So a question regarding that. Um. Does that mean we would be short on Sunset Park or we would have nothing else for basketball?
I don't think it impacts that at all. Just a, uh, um. You just didn't get the same number transferred over.
You think.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, right. It's just a typo.
Yeah.
All right, so that, so then it not, it's not the 5620 then? It's going to be the 41,730?
That's correct.
Okay.
And there, I believe the, the quote for that is on page 28.
41,730. Yes. Sarah, are you done or? First of all, I, I pretty much completely disagree with this analysis. I don't think that we are forever, due to the mayor's suggestion, um, doing anything against the federal provisions. We've expended money that we apparently then funded from reserves, although that, to my knowledge, we were, only came to that knowledge recently. So we didn't know how the overage was being funded for a long time. And it was never anyone's suggestion that taxes be increased to add items to the capital improvement plans. I agree with Fletcher. The only thing that was a concern was being able to, um, get quotes that we'd approved or purchase orders, uh, in time for the end of the month. That said, I think I, I pretty much agree with all of this. The only one that I have some problems with is the town square because we're going to be letting purchase orders for items that we have no plan for yet. And, uh, we cannot put in an irrigation system until we know what we're putting where and what the plants are. It's just the reality of how you, you do this work. You have to have your plan first. I also wonder if we know how many streetlights we're going to ultimately want in that area. Um. I mean, I can see we can do the purchase orders and prepay some or all of these items, but we cannot actually do any installation until we have a real plan. So with the provision that.
I completely agree with you.
Okay.
Absolutely, completely agree with you. We're going to encumber for the entire town square to be irrigated. But we won't install that until after we have the plan so we know what type of irrigation needs to go where in the park.
What's, what is exactly does encumber mean?
To set the dollars aside.
Okay, but do we have, do we have a purchase order or a contract signed with them?
It would be a, it would be a purchase order from us to them lining up with their quote.
So we could change whatever happens in the thing, as long as it's in the same amount of money. If we want to put one sprinkle or two feet to the right, it doesn't have anything to do with it.
That's exactly right.
But, okay, but so you have to have a purchase order, but not necessarily a written contract?
Well, the purchase order is a written contract for us to purchase that dollar amount from that vendor.
Okay, and, and if we go, if it costs more than that, we have to have to chip in our own money.
That's, yeah, that would be for me to come to you and say, we've gone over. I need help.
Right, but you already have some, yeah, so, okay, all right. This, that was just, I'm just unclear about exactly what encumber meant.
Well, I think Eric addressed that specifically in his email response to us. He said it included contracts, purchase orders, task orders, accepted quotes, and then he put et cetera. So I don't know what et cetera might be.
The purchase order and a contract, I guess, some more, similar things, okay. Uh, my other question is if we, uh, you know, if we got $77,000 set aside for the town's sign out here or something.
Yeah.
Do we need, we still have to go through our purchase order, purchase order?
Absolutely.
So we're going to get bids and we're going to get it to accept the bid?
Yeah, we've already got the quotes for the, from the mason. We've got the quotes from the, uh, sculpture.
Yeah.
And the quotes on the sign, I, I need to know the lighting.
The council will approve those bids, yeah, right. If they, yeah, okay. All right, any, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead. Anybody else?
Um. Yeah, I have one question. Um. How much did we go over on the Welcome Center and the Police Station and how much was transferred?
Uh, I've got to get final construction numbers. We just paid the last change order. So I'll have a final report for you.
The ballpark's fine.
500 each.
Okay, so we.
Building in total.
500,000.
That's an absolute guess.
I was like, wow.
Oh, wait a minute. You went a million dollars over budget?
No, we spent a million dollars.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And so how much was transferred?
Well, the, the amount came out of our checkbook. So when we reached the final budget of ARPA, our checkbook wrote the checks for the difference.
And that's what I'm asking. How much was that? If there, there were 500,000 each.
Probably 200,000 each came out of our checkbook.
Okay.
And 600,000 and change came out of ARPA.
ARPA, right, that's one.
Matt, would you please, um, just make a clarification here that the Welcome Center itself, it, is that building and all the things that went wrong with the, with the construction or whatever else they had to do, if the little Welcome Center is not a million-dollar project?
The whole building, no.
Yeah, it's the whole building.
It's a seven hundred thousand.
The whole building.
Yeah, the public restrooms are probably the biggest part of that project.
Center and you got objectors to the Welcome Center, but I don't want it to look like that building is a million dollars.
Oh, we, we're, at least, well, up here, we're well aware of that, yes, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Oswald, it's a 1.4 million dollar project for the two. Just to clarify.
Well, we bought the building, yeah.
Plus the cost of buying the building.
And the police department.
No, that includes the police department.
It includes the police department. We didn't have to buy that, yeah. All right, um, any other questions about the ARPA funding?
All right.
What, yes. Why? Why did we want to not do this? I mean, these have been in our ARPA funding for what, how many years ago? Three, four years ago?
I think there was just a question of whether we could encumber it in time. Whether we're doing it legally, you know, and it looks like we're going to be fine. So we, we've got a motion here, so, yeah.
The only one that I have a concern about is, I'm sorry, Matt. I know your heart's set on this and mine is too, is Sunset Park. And that's because I just went to this environmental meeting. And, um, if you recall, those of you who were here then, when we were in Raft, we put up a big poster of, you know, what's going to happen with us, all this, uh, changes that we're going to see and sea level rise, whatever. Well, in this, uh, from the Nature Conservancy, they turned us on to this tool, uh, for coastal resilience. And it's really neat. You can put your address in and it shows what's going to happen to your house. Well, first thing I put in was the Wharf. You know, I think the future does not look rosy for doing construction at the Wharf. But I will say, uh, since we would have to put money there anyway to fix the gravel, that was a temporary fix. I just am hesitant to, and, and that was part of our workshop, was should we encumber funds uh, to, but in projects that are going to be underwater, basically. And, and, um, you can look at this, and it's really neat. If you want to look at it, it's called maps.coastalresilience.org. Put in your address and you'll see. So I will vote for it for the reason that, um, we'll have to repair it anyway.
The other, the other concern about the Sunset Park is that, as Matt indicated, there is currently a trip hazard.
That's what I'm talking about.
That needs to be resolved.
Well, he's putting, the new thing calls for concrete too, which is pretty water impervious, yeah.
Right.
We're not going to put the, the pavers down, which could possibly be dislodged. So if we pour con, there's been concrete on the other side for, that's not been affected, yeah, so.
And may, may I say too that we, any enhancement of our major asset is.
However temporary it is.
It, that is a prediction and that is science, but it is not fact yet, okay? So we are, we are talking here about our major asset.
I know.
And whatever we can do to improve that marina and keep us afloat with that, if you will. It works for me.
All right, uh, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, okay, let's vote.
Did we? I don't remember.
I thought we had a motion. No, no, read the motion. Thank you. Okay.
The remaining ARPA funds as presented?
Uh, second? Uh, we've had discussion pretty well. Okay, oh. Yeah, Mavis. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I like my vote in all of us. All right, okay, uh.
May I add one thing, please? I am so happy that we are actually doing something because we have gone through this process three times in the 30 years that I've been here, at least that long. And every time, we've spent bundles of money trying to say what we are going to look like this year, that year. Finally doing something. Thank you.
Uh, adopt meeting schedule for, uh, calendar of 2025. Do I have a motion to accept that schedule?
I'll move. I'll move to, uh, adopt the meeting calendar for 2025 as presented.
Uh, second, uh, any discussion on this?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to get the motion out there.
I, I'll let you all go first. Maybe you'll cover one on sale.
My question is that this year, because the fourth Monday of November was in the week of Thanksgiving, we moved the meeting to the week before. This proposed schedule moves it back to the Monday of the week of Thanksgiving. My preference would be to put it back to the third um, Monday of November so that November and December are both on the third Monday, four weeks apart from each other.
Anybody else any comment about that?
I agree with her comment. I have her comments.
My only problem with that is that that shortens the time that we meet or lengthens the time that we meet. You know, if we can keep it consistently, let me think, on the, on the Mondays, uh, then we would have, and also, I think we're in violation of code if we change a meeting after we approve it. I saw that in the paper about Cape Charles. They publicize it in the paper. I think that has to be done. Um, there are steps that you have to take to change meeting dates. I have no problem.
Yeah, just advertise it two weeks in advance.
Yeah.
We're already in violation. I think we're supposed to meet twice a month according to our charter. We've never changed it.
Yes, exactly.
So I mean, I, yeah, I wouldn't.
Um, so I.
Not the charter.
Change it in court and, but I remember what's the name. That was the council.
Right, yeah. Well, um, let's go back to this Thanksgiving thing.
For, for December, that meeting is on the 16th, which is the third Monday. So the question is, do we have a shorter space between the October and November meetings or between the November and December meetings? It's going to be one of them.
I, I don't see what the problem is with the Monday before Thanksgiving. It's not a, that's not a holiday day.
It's not a holiday day, but a lot of people are, are traveling and.
I have no problem with leaving it on the 24th of November. And I would move it to the 22nd in December and keep the same amount of time in between.
The 22nd?
22nd is Sunday.
Uh, whatever it is then, Tuesday.
That would be, that'd be the day before. That'd be the day before, yeah.
Okay, all right.
We usually just move the December meeting. Let's, let's, I would, my, my would be just move the December meeting.
It would just be one month. It would just be October to November that you would have three weeks.
Yeah, I know.
November to December would be four weeks. So it's just that one month. And this past year, it was a little off because we had two meetings in September and two meetings in October.
Yeah.
I must be looking at the wrong thing then because I shouldn't have. November 24th.
Right.
And then you're suggesting December 16.
Yeah, so we're only.
Sarah's suggesting moving November to the 17th, which would be then four weeks later for December.
It is.
Okay, that would give us a month between November and December, but that would shorten.
So from October to November would be three weeks.
So for one of them, there will be a shorter span. Do we want that to be for the, for the November meeting or for the December meeting is the question?
Or neither.
Yeah, all right, yeah. Do we have, the motions, the motion is to keep the, to adopt this proposed, so we've had some comments. Do we, let's vote all in favor of this motion.
I'd be happy to amend my motion for the November meeting if, if that's the, well.
I have another amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
The schedule shows the personnel committee meeting monthly. We had decided to meet quarterly. So this should reflect meetings on March fourth, June third, September second, and December second. For hearing my calculations. At any rate, some of these should be removed.
Well, you need to adopt that.
I can make that adjustment.
You're going to adopt that in the motion?
Are you agreeable to that?
I am.
What's the consensus on the November meeting? I say we leave it like it is, but that's my, you know, I don't vote.
I think a lot of people travel. And I think for staff, if you would want to take, because you get the two days already, so if you wanted to take, you know, it's not unlike, a lot of people grab that week because you already have the two days.
Have a problem with this, with these dates because of, of what? Why don't?
Well, they, they want to move, they want to move the November a week up, so it's not the money before Thanksgiving. That's the only, only change we're making on this right now.
Which would be a repeat of what we did.
This year.
This year.
Okay, okay. Then we need to change this. This is not what's presented. So we're going to change this to the twenty-fourth of the what?
Seventeenth.
Okay, all right, we have a motion on to change that to the seventeenth and change all the personnel to just four times a year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so.
Oh, okay.
Because I, I'm not going to be here, so I'm not volunteering.
Did you get that, Debbie? Thank you.
Stays on the sixteen.
We just moved, we just changed things. All right, we're on, okay. Appointed member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. As you know, we're a member down short of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we, the council does not appoint that actual member. The circuit judge does. We just recommend someone to him. We've submitted, we've asked for people over the last couple of months, and Dick Freeman has graciously agreed to accept it. We just need permission to submit his name. Do I have a motion to submit his name?
Mister, may I move that we, oh, pardon. Mister, may I move that we accept Mister Freeman's nomination for the BZA?
A second?
I agree.
All in favor? Well, discussion, sorry.
Who is our member now?
Two, two other members.
We've got Jeffrey Barrett and Jim McGowan.
Jim McGowan, yeah. And we need three.
Oh, I see.
A minimum is three. We, sometimes we had five, but I think it's, we've seemed to be having trouble filling these spots, so.
Well, the last time they met was, what, two thousand eighteen?
I don't even think, it might even be before that. It was a long time.
No, I promise you I did the minutes.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. So that's what, six years I haven't met? They, they only meet, you know, unusually. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so we have those to be the three members now, so. All in favor then?
Aye.
Opposed? That's, that carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. All right. Council discussion, status of school engineering report, Matt?
Yeah, if, if you all remember, we went through and got quotes for the four items that the school had requested we look at is obtaining a loan or trying to help them secure funding for these four items that they wanted repaired. The heating system, the windows, the roof, and the electricity. Subsequent to that request, council came back and said that they wanted to get a full FCA, which is a facility construction analysis, which basically is a very, very detailed research and recommendation for the building in a lot of areas. We had three people reply to the first bid request that, that were for the four items. Then as soon as we put the FCA bid out or told them that we'd like to step up the, the level of analysis, two of them dropped out pretty quickly. And then the last one has said that they would have to outsource the architectural portion of that FCA, and they have not done so yet. So the question stands, do we want to continue to pursue obtaining funding for the required repairs at the Historic and Hancock School? Or do we not? Because it's looking, it's looking like it's going to be difficult for someone to do an F, a full FCA. I can put it back out to bid, but that's just, I believe that would be kicking the can down the road again. So I, I just want you all to discuss the fact whether or not we want to continue looking for engineering and architect firms that can provide an FCA. Do you want to step it back to the four items that we know they need because they were written in the previous FCA and haven't been done yet? Or do we want to table it all together and pull this off the town's list?
Question. If we were to drop it back to the initial request, do you think that, how many of the companies who responded initially do you think we might hear back from?
Well, if we bring it back to the four original items, we already have their, their quotes.
Okay.
So I could call them back and say, you know, is this offer still on the table? Is it still good?
Okay.
And then I'd happily do that or not.
You'd have to contact the, the one that's still thinking about it. They haven't given you a quote quite.
No, because they don't know what the architectural firm would charge them.
They wouldn't need an architectural firm if we go back to the four.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Help me to understand, what is the difference between a full construction analysis and a structural engineering assessment? Because I wrote the motion, and that's what I asked for, was structural engineering sounds, what's the difference?
When we went to that plus the, the four items that they had, it had mechanical and engineering, it had structural, it's got electrical. So once I mentioned those three things, they said, oh, you want an FCA. You don't need, you know, just a quote on the four items. So it was because of your motion that we had to elevate the, the project.
Why, but why are we having trouble? I don't understand. In two thousand eight, and this is from, being said here in chambers, we had a structural analysis from Becker Morgan.
Right.
In two thousand eleven, we had another Becker Morgan. In two thousand twenty-four, we had Bancroft. McPherson and AWB have also been mentioned, but there's nothing on the website about them, so why are we having trouble getting structural engineering analysis assessment from these companies?
I, I can't speak to that. They've said that their workload doesn't allow for them to do this level of detail for us right now.
Well, there, there, there's more than structural. There's electrical and there's mechanical.
That's all structural engineering.
Mechanicals nothing to do with.
Engineering and mechanical and it's all thing.
It's not structural.
Well, that's what my motion was, yeah, for all of it.
Yeah, we need somebody to tell us whether the roof's going to work, and, and somebody to tell what kind of air conditioning system, and whether it's going to, that's really what we need to know, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, so if we scale back to the four things, let's, you know, we have, let's see what they say, again.
Hey, Matt, can, can you remind us what the four, because I'm.
Yeah, that's fine. The four things are the heating system, because it's using the original package. The windows, because they're letting all the air in and all the heat out. The roof and the electrical, and the electrical, I believe the work's actually either being done or has been done because they worried about having to use space heaters this winter, because the big system hasn't been replaced.
The new panels in, they haven't yet run the branches to the rooms. They're working on that as, as we speak, probably almost, yeah.
Okay.
So are these the four things that, that was being, the five hundred thousand was being asked for? The five hundred thousand, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, I think, at four percent for forty years? That's, am I correct?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think they were asking, and, and we had concerns about what kind of air conditioning system to put in and, and what kind, and whether the roof, the last estimate they had for the roof was what, five, when they did North Akamak, or South Akamak School, which is a long time ago.
Right.
So we needed, and so I think we, we really need to know, answer those questions. I don't think we need to complete.
Well, we've gotten quotes for all four items.
Yeah.
And those were presented to you, and I believe you're right. I think it's the five thirty-two.
It's five hundred and thirty-two thousand, at four percent for forty years, which would be five hundred and thirty-five thousand in interest, which would come to.
Well, let's.
Let me, please. I know, you don't.
A little out of order about, we're trying to decide whether this, we don't need the money right now.
Discussion.
No, the discussion is whether we need the engineers to look at.
To the five hundred thousand, correct?
But we're not talking about how we're funding it right now. We're talking about whether we need the engineering study. Yeah, right, correct, yeah. I'm sorry, you're out of order. Thank you. This question is about the, we're talking about the engineering study and about what you proposed. Do we want to, what we want to do with that? We're not talking about how we fund it correctly right now. The, the, the whole building. We're talking about the engineering study, so let's try to stay on. If you want to bring that up.
If you away with the engineering study,
Yeah.
then you want to go to the five hundred thousand dollar loan. I see them tied.
Not at this meeting, we're not discussing.
The engineering study at this meeting.
No, no, we do not want to do that.
We're trying to get what information we can. The, the full report appears that that's not going to be possible to receive. So in the face of that, the question is, do we get what information is available? Or do we say we don't want any information if we can't have all of it?
I don't even know who that information came from. I just saw numbers. I didn't see any specs or quotes or estimates.
Companies are ready to do this, correct? And the quotes are.
We don't know the companies.
We had three quotes, and those were provided with the, with the bids in the last meeting. I'm happy to put those back in front of you.
Yeah, so the question is, and they were not.
Right, once we, once the request went from do an analysis of these four items, which they did, and then they, and the school got quotes, so we know exactly how much it would cost. Then we were requesting a higher level building analysis. That's when the two engineering firms pulled back, and the ones said that they would have to outsource the architectural. So that's the only firm that's left in it.
I'm, I'm still somewhat confused about the two, the two companies did not submit any, any kind of bid for us because they didn't want to do that, correct?
They didn't submit for the FCA.
What, they, they submitted for?
The four items.
The four items, but that has not been done. We're waiting.
They haven't, they haven't done the analysis, no.
So a question is, do we want to just go back to the four or continue trying to find companies to do the complete study?
Or do we want to?
Or abandon everything?
Or do we want to use the quotes that we've got?
So let's decide that, and then, yeah, we're not talking about how we fund the, the things to the school.
Those options down again, please. What are they?
It's either continue to work with the firm that's there to find out if they can do a full FCA.
We should give them a timeframe that we need to know something by a certain date.
Yeah, we'll work on the details later.
Try that again. Continue to work with.
The existing, the firm that's the only firm remaining that's willing to do the work, who needs to outsource the architectural portion.
McPherson.
And then, or we back up and say we need engineering help with the four items that the school has acknowledged that they need done and have quotes for to support that the work that they've gotten quotes for is, is appropriate.
And you would use those three?
I would go back to them and ask if their quotes for the engineering study for those four items is still good.
It would be an independent thing that we hired, not the school, correct?
That's correct.
Right, so we're getting a third party to look at the, at what they, if they propose will work.
Instead of local contractors, what we had.
We're going to use local contractors, I hope, but the.
They'll tell us.
Not their specs or their.
They'll tell us if the project.
Right.
Right.
They'll tell us if, if the quotes we got for the work that they've asked for are appropriate for the.
Is that somewhat similar to what you initially proposed to us to get?
No, that is not. My motion was to get a structural engineering analysis.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Wait, there was a third one.
Table the whole thing and just go with the bids we have, yeah.
Or do nothing.
Do nothing.
Do nothing is always a choice.
As, as, as the town do nothing, yes. All right, anybody, Mavis?
I just, Matt, I'm looking at the Becker Morgan report from two thousand eleven. Is that the same kind of report that we're asking for now?
Very similar, yes.
And is there any validity to this report? I, I know not in dollars and cents it doesn't matter because this, you know, we're talking that many years ago, but I'm just saying that the problems that existed then mostly exist still. And are we going to be just repetitive or with this, with another structural report? I mean, this, this looks pretty in-depth to me, more paper than I want to look through.
Well, I obviously can't speak to.
It was three million dollars worth of, of plan that they presented here, but it's from two thousand eleven, so I get that it's going to be an awful lot more.
Well, that's if you bring the building back to a really.
What are we looking to do? That's the question. Right, what are we, why are we going through all this? What are we looking to do? What is the end result? And for how long and what, under what, for what purpose? I mean, you know, what is the purpose?
Question. For me, the piece of information we're missing is when we might expect to get a full plan from the remaining company that is willing to do it. If they could give us a date.
Well, they haven't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We would just have that information, which to me would make a difference in which we decided to do.
I'll have to go back to them and find out how they're doing and finding an architect that's interested in doing the work. And then they'd have to put together a quote for us that includes that number and theirs. And at that point, I'd be able to bring it back and give you a, a date upon which they would be held accountable.
I'd like to make one comment. I had a meeting at the school last week where I couldn't take my big LL Bean puffer jacket off because they're keeping their heat at fifty-eight degrees just to make sure that nothing freezes over. I'd hate to delay it even further, and I know there's some, some things we do want to accomplish first to make sure we're spending money in the appropriate fashion. But are we doing it to a detriment?
Never visit my house. I keep it fifty-six.
Does it go down that far? Good for you.
I was there at the school over the weekend, and it was comfortably warm enough for me to take my coat off.
Well, no, no matter what we do, we're not going to get any heat in there this winter.
No.
That's, that's a moot point. That's, no, if we acted right now, we wouldn't have anything in there. So let's get back to the engineering.
I have a question I'd like to ask Councilmember Knox. The Save Our School group came before us once and asked us to sign a resolution to support the Akamak, restoring the Akamak School. We did not. They came back a second time, and we did. What's happening with that? Has anything been decided or?
I, I don't know. I haven't kept up with the status of that. I've seen something in the paper or heard a comment some months later, but I don't have any.
Well, the reason I asked.
What is, what is that? What is the relevance of that to this?
Well, I just wondered if they had gotten any cost estimates to bring it to any, because of the Eastern Shore Post in, on December sixth, the Marion Smith, I'm sure you all saw, Cultural Center, fourteen million to, of course, they're talking about, you know, they don't recommend flat roofs. They're going to raise the roofs and extensive.
We need to get back.
And DHTD, so.
Well, we've already voted to do this, you know, to get these engineering studies. We need to decide whether we want to wait for the fourth one, the third one to come in, or do we want to revise it and just go with the initial information? So, or we punt it down the road.
Here, here is a, a question. Would council be open to, and Matt, do you think it would be possible to try to get a, an answer from the one remaining company who has said that they might do the full thing with outsourcing of the architectural part by the time of our January meeting? And at the January meeting, with either an answer or no answer from them, weigh that answer or absence of answer versus the, the bids that we have for the four, the report of the four things? So yes, kick it down the road, but, but potentially have enough information still to try to get the full report and have a plan to proceed if that's not possible.
Well, you're not going to, you're not going to have the engineering reports, but they're not, you're not even going to authorize them until the end of January.
They'd be able to give us a quote by then.
But, but if they could, if they could give us an answer of whether they would be
Oh, I see you're doing two things at the same time.
To do it, if they could, if they could either secure or say we are not able to secure architectural people to do that part of the report, then we would know, are we, do we have anybody who can do the full report that was in the motion that was adopted?
Still unsure about how that's going to speed anything up.
It's gonna delay it one month, but no more than one month.
Yeah, but could we ask the other, okay, we already know what they've given, okay, you're right. So that's, that's fine. I mean, I.
If they, if they could do it and if they could do the whole thing and it and we have apples to apples to compare.
Well, we're just, is that a, is that agreeable? We don't need to vote on that. I think we're just, we're still in the holding pattern to wait from that now. Is anybody agreed on that? Alright, is uh and we originally talked about having an additional meeting in January. Doesn't sound like anybody's interested in doing that. Or an earlier meeting or not, just do a regular meeting? Okay, well, okay, there doesn't seem to be too much interest in doing that. Alright, personnel meeting, Cindy?
Um, the Personnel Committee didn't meet this month, but we will be um going into closed session to have a conversation with the Town Manager as per our plan to discuss his performance with him quarterly this year.
Okay, uh Planning Commission, uh we have not met. We don't have a planning, um we still are, uh the cutoff date is at the end of the month, correct?
For. January 1st.
We have, what, three people, I thought, and we'll forward those applications to the council. Uh waterfront, they didn't meet, correct? Yeah.
But the boats look great.
Yeah, they did. They had the correct, uh EDA?
Yes, we did meet. And I plan on doing the minutes tomorrow and I will forward those minutes to all of you so you know what's going on. Uh, the Littleston Construction Report, the Realtor Office is done. The Hair Salon is coming, uh they're working on the upstairs. Uh, in six months, they will have their permanent certificate. Is that correct, Mr. Spock?
That's what we're estimating, yeah.
Yeah, um they have 97,000 left to draw on the accounts. This is the part you may be interested in. Repayment begins next July. And they'll probably ask for an extension to October. Forty years, that's 480 months, $3,300 a month, 1 million in payback. That gives us a total of 590, 93,000 in total interest in 40 years. Yeah, so, you know, this is not a windfall here. That's just gonna, all of a sudden, there's half a million dollars.
There's also no penalty to pay early, so if.
Yeah.
If they did pay it off, we would not accumulate that much.
And it was shared that their rent is, what was it, less? No, their repayment will be less than their previous.
Their previous two, one of our board members mentioned that he was renting two properties to them and this is cheaper. This loan payment is cheaper than what he was charging them. But of course, you have to take into consideration, they probably have another loan too because they have their own money to put into the project, so.
So um with that, I would like to um tender my resignation from EDA. Pass it down. With, the reason is, um, in my notes, I didn't include this in my letter, but um the health of my family is important to me.
Yeah.
Uh, so I've decided to cut back and I feel very confident in the members of the EDA that are on there, that they will make excellent decisions. I'm leading it with a lot of intelligent people and very competent people. Um, according to our bylaws, there there shall be only one member of the EDA from council. And I agree with that, you know, I think they should be acting as two separate bodies. But as was pointed out at our last meeting, state code says you can have as many members on EDA as long as, from council, as long as you don't, aren't the majority. If you're a town of less than 2,500 people. So my question is, why shouldn't we honor that? If we doubled our population, then we would have to, and that does play into my decision. I do not think there should be two council members on EDA. So I'm asking you, please accept my resignation.
Congratulations on the job you've done.
Thank you, but believe me, it wasn't me. It was a great, great minds working together. Thank you. And Cindy, I'd like to thank you for heading up personnel. You've done an excellent job with that.
Thank you. Um, I have a question about EDA. When the EDA develops the the loan.
The revolving loan fund.
Revolving loan plan.
Right.
We wouldn't have to wait until the loan was repaid. I mean, we would have to develop or get enough payments to simply have a meaningful amount to re.
$3,300 a month, yeah.
So.
I'm not sure is my answer to that. I'd have to look into it. At some point, we'd have to have enough capital to lend back out.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure at what point that threshold would be met.
Presumably sooner than 40 years.
Well.
Fingers crossed.
We're hoping um to somehow develop, um apply for grants. Whether that's members of the EDA working on that. Uh, Matt mentioned that uh there's a quite a few grants out there for, what was it, Matt? Oh. Upper Market Street.
Uptown, yeah.
Yeah, uptown, um or hiring somebody to explore grants for us, we don't know.
Interest that you accrue, thank you, the interest that you accrue would be available as a loan to another business, correct?
No, the million dollars that comes back in is available to loan back out to another development. Uh, the interest stays in-house and could potentially be a match for other grants. It could fund eventually our our own individual audit. It could, you know, so there's other things that could potentially fund and we could, again, potentially outsource a treasurer and secretary position should we get to that level, although I don't see that happening.
How much is the interest every month?
It changes, it it changes because of the amortization schedule, so I believe it starts about half and then goes down from there.
Okay, alright.
So you can see it's being left in competent hands.
So we're going to have two openings on the EDA that I guess we can hopefully uh uh appoint in the January meeting and we, uh, yeah.
Do we have any applications for that, Matt?
Yeah, one person that's expressed interest and been brought before council and that didn't get moved forward.
Yeah, we have, we have one application, yeah.
I would, I would think you would extend the application period since you now have another opening.
In all likelihood.
Well, we could seat the one and then, yeah, they, oh, we've already, yeah, okay, um, alright, any other thing, okay, uh. Community reports in Hancock Main Street.
Well, the first item I was going to talk about was the work on hiring a new program manager, but I've already been over that one. Uh, I do want to mention that if anyone knows, anyone interested in um a part-time job, please um send them our way. We'd be happy to talk to them.
What's the salary?
I think $20 an hour.
It's 21, well, right now it's 2160. That's what we're.
That's their current position, yeah.
25 hours a week. We're required by Main Street to have an employee that holds at least 25 hours a week.
I'm sure you noticed in the newspaper also that we received a $10,000 microbusiness grant from the Virginia Tourism Commission that uh will be used to promote tourism in the off-season. I'm sure I went over that with the the grants. And the only other thing I wanted to mention was that we have a new logo. So you'll be seeing that. It's um plays off the O uh that's on the um on our website, you know, the oh, the fun you'll have and all that stuff. That's it. Any questions?
Historic Hancock School?
Okay, two things. First, the previously to the last couple of years, the school secured its own grass cutting services. The last couple of years, the town has provided that service. And the, I have a letter from Joni detailing the the intention of the school to go back to securing its own lawn cutting services starting next year. With gratitude that the town will continue to plow the parking lot if we ever get snow again. So that I just wanted to, and I can because of expense and difficulties. Specifically, I think with the handling of the sand spurs. The sand spurs, the little burrs in the grass, no, they, they're in the.
Need to be cut more often than that.
They're in the ground.
I thought it was a savings that the town was cutting the grass.
They were paying for that service.
It was. It was a cost savings, but they're.
It it turned out to be more problem than the cost savings was worth.
Yeah. Okay, any?
Um, and then the, here's the rest of the update. The school was pleased to be a stop on the Artisans Guild tour the weekend of Thanksgiving. There were 17 artists. There were over 350 to 400 guests to the town and the school. It was a festive Wine Wednesday on December 5th, 4th. There will not be a Wine Wednesday in January. Open again for artisans this past Saturday as part of the Christmas in an Hancock event. Um, there were 12 vendors with various wares, both indoors and outdoors in addition to the resident artists, and it was also a site for buying homes tour tickets. The, and in answer to an earlier question, the work to upgrade the electrical system has begun installing a 200 amp three-phase panel to accommodate additional circuits to allow for space heaters and backup to protect the water pipes. The next step is to run wires for sub panels to reach all rental spaces and install the new circuits. So far, the boiler is continuing to work. The search for an executive director will be renewed as we move into the new year. Joni has agreed to remain for the foreseeable term until there is a new hire. And Merry Christmas from the HOS Board and Director. We are thankful to everyone who has supported the school over the year and look forward to a successful 2025.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, public comment, Glenn?
Klein Smith, 12 Market Street. First off, uh, the heat at Onancock School, I don't know if you're aware, but you can rent commercial boilers. Uh, Carrie Boiler Works, they cover all of the state of Virginia. Um, I don't know what the cost is, but it's a commercial boiler on a tractor trailer. They back it up, park it there, and they do all the hookup and everything else and bypass your existing system. So if the need arises, it's a 24-hour deal. So if you call them and get prices and something happens, you can have them here in 24 hours backing that thing in and hooking it up. Carrie Boiler Works, 1-800-727-7252. I've seen these systems used many times in New York City and they're unbelievable. You don't even know they're there. Okay, uh, secondly, uh, our police force. I'd like to request that you budget for an additional police officer. If we have open shifts, we need an additional police officer, and I believe we have open shifts. Okay, so if we have an open shift where there's no police officer on duty in this town, we need more police. If you look at the age of the residents that live in this town and the amount of people who live here part-time, there's a lot of vacant houses in town and a lot of senior citizens who live here who are easy marks. Okay, cameras do not replace police officers. We cannot rely on the county to come here. When you call the county, they take more than 20 minutes to respond into the town of Onancock. Okay, the county does not have enough officers. So I'm asking you, please budget for an additional police officer in the upcoming budget. Um, my other item is, I'd like to, I guess this is a question, how come we don't have Christmas lights all the way down to the wharf? On the telephone poles?
It's not a commercial district. It wasn't, you know, originally, but it can't, they're looking at it.
I I mean, when you come to the end of the lights and you look down Market Street, it looks like a ghost town and we do have, you you don't see the lights from the wharf or the boats or anything. It would be, I mean, it would be so much nicer to see something going down there at Christmas.
We had it down there at one time and then we just, yeah, we, there's some of the brackets are, but uh we bought some more lights to go out. We had, you know, this year they went all the way out to, you know, the car wash.
Yeah, I.
We bought, what, five different new lights and we can.
I mean, I.
Before we're on your comment to the Christmas committee.
Yeah, I'd like to see that because, I mean, you go around to all the other towns.
Yeah.
That have town lights.
Yeah.
They, from town limit to town limit, they put the lights up. Um, it would be nice if we did that also, especially since we host the Christmas parade. Um, it would be nice if we can get some people to move, you know, lengthen, have them move down towards the wharf, you know, the pedestrians instead of all being up in one area. So it's it's hard on Santa Claus to, you know, see all those people. Other than that, that's all I have. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Okay, alrighty.
Ma- um, Mayor's Report, I don't have too much, uh, just a thank you to uh everybody that had anything to do with the Christmas. So that, first of all, the town, Matt and the and the and the town crew did a Herculean job putting up the lights this year. I I usually help them. I did nothing. They did everything. They 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 did a great job. Uh, you know, we had electrical problems. They got that fixed. Uh, got some new lights on the downtown buildings that are kind of neat. Uh, we've actually expanded the the Christmas lights going out of town this year. Uh, and uh, so I, and and then the parade, uh, you know, the whole homes tour, Jeff, Kim, uh, probably missing some people, but you guys did a incredible job. Uh, I I didn't hear, you know, it was just, the parade was, I don't know how many people were at the parade, but it seemed like more than we've ever had before. Uh, and that the homes tour was great. Uh, the the Santa Claus thing at the wharf was, I can't, I stopped counting at 350 people. It was a huge number down there. Yeah, 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 and it was a huge number of people down there. That's a big success to everything. The whole weekend was just great. So I'd like to thank everybody. I'm sure I missed thanking some people, but thank you very much. Alright, um, Town Manager's Report?
Um, Financial Report first is, uh, we're in stable and good shape. Our cash position is excellent. Um, there are some places that where the expenditures exceed the percentage of the year completed.
Yeah.
Um, and those are primarily because we haven't transferred the funds that you approved from the reserves up into revenue to offset those expenditures that you had approved. So, uh, you know, for example, the uh $37,000 for the panel at the water tower. Uh, we have the expenditure in here. We don't have the revenue up top to match it, so that's causing a distortion, and I did explain that on the explanation column. But other than that, we're we're right on track and, you know, I don't see anything changing. As far as the Managers' Report, um, obviously it's in writing and I'm not going to go through the whole thing. I just wanted to jot on a couple of things. One is the um, the street signs, uh, we're ready to place the order. I'm putting a second set of eyes on the street names because I don't want to misspell anything because I've been looking at them for so long. So that just needs a proofreader and then I'll put the order in. Um, and then the wayfinding signs, VDOT has some requirements, uh, one of which is to provide them a mock-up of a sign uh with, that has the most letters and characters in it and on it uh so that they can see the proportion of the sign and the size that the sign would need to be in order to fit all those letters. Uh, and then how big it would need to be um to do that and how, you know, how high it would have to be and how wide it would be um based on that. So they've got to get the mock-up there. So that's happening now by the sign maker. He's doing that for us. Um, it's just the size of the letters and the reflection and all of that that needs to go through, so that's just taking some time. Um, the fence around the tree's been installed. Uh, I mentioned that last month, but the one thing I did want to mention is that there's two volunteers in town who went there, you know, as often as they could find time to spread the mulch that we originally had trucked in from the northeast um community park um that we replaced with the rubber mulch. So we moved it under the tree, uh, and these folks came in there with wheelbarrows and shovels and pitchforks and and did, you know, as you said, Herculean work to get that um mulch spread. So it's a big thank you to those two folks. They oft, they often want to be, remain anonymous, so I'm going to let them remain anonymous. If they tell me that I messed that up, I'll give you their names next time.
Thank them.
Oh, I have, over and over again. They've done incredible work and they do a lot of work for the town without people seeing them. Oh, I have, over and over again. They've done incredible work, and they do a lot of work for the town without people seeing them. So you know, the street between fairgrounds and boundary got cleaned by them before Christmas weekend without, you know, by dark of night. So, good folks. The water project that we've got coming up to the connection that you had mentioned out at the corner of Liberty and Hill. Those homes are in an Ancock, and they do, by by code and ordinance, get water because it's just straight across the street. But because Liberty is a VDOT street, that causes all kinds of special concerns for them. So we we had to buy signs to detour people around all the way from Liberty and College, you know, to show them how to get to Liberty and Hill. So there were thirty-one signs that we needed to buy to comply with VDOT requirements. Those signs will be used over and over and over again by the town, so I'm not belittling VDOT or the work that they do or their requirements. But anyway, we have not heard back from the Virginia two fifty facade grants, so I'm expecting the results from those to be, well, negative for us and shortly. The capital improvement plan, I just wanted to give an update on where we are with each item. The Queen Street parking lot there. We completed the flushing of the stormwater system, which was actually a really important, you know, job. We had to dump as much water as we could dump in and make sure that it flushed through the drainage, the stormwater drainage. If it did not, then we would have had to put a new stormwater system in underneath the parking lot, and that would have been a budget buster for us. So we don't have to do that because we can use the existing system, and we can also tie in the the stormwater from the back of our building, thirty-eight, and the back of Lowest and Forty into the existing system so they can deal with the stormwater behind their buildings. It doesn't cost us anything for that, except our portion. The street signs I mentioned, we've just got the the proofreading to do, and then I'll order them all, and then we'll probably do three at a time because we'll have to call for misutilities. We should make sure they get properly marked before we dig. But we've got the permit from VDOT for that already. Wayfinding signs, I already mentioned that. And the entry sign, we've got the mock-up in the packet tonight. That's been approved over and over. I have quotes from the mason that I got this morning for both veneer bricks and whole cobblestone. Surprisingly, they're the same number within, you know, a couple of hundred bucks, thousand, whatever. So I have a quote from Turner on the on getting an original Turner sculpture up on the top. I did find another artist that does bronze work, and it was it was twenty thousand dollars more. You know, this is a pricey medium. So and and Mr. Turner did offer us a really deep discount. So that was generous of him to do that. So I'd like to see that move forward. The important thing that we need to decide now is what type of lighting we're going to have for the sign. I put a a sample of what I kind of liked in the packet tonight. I don't remember what page it's on, but it's back behind.
The.
Twenty-seven, it looks like.
Yes, thank you. And twenty-seven, it's got, because we're we're dark sky compliant, every new fixture that we're putting in, we'd like to move in that direction. And just for those of you who are going to email me about this, yes, we're, I've got two fixtures for the front of our building on thirty-eight that are dark sky compliant and unless abrupt.
Which sign are we planning on having, twenty-six, twenty-six or twenty-seven?
Well, twenty-six is the mock-up that we will do. So twenty-six is our sign.
I didn't hear you. Could you repeat?
Twenty-six is the sign that y'all approved.
Right.
Twenty-seven is the type of lighting that.
Thank you.
Okay. And that would be dark sky compliant if it's backlit.
Can we move the sign closer to the road?
I, we can do anything, Fletcher. I mean, at this point, yeah, I I I have ideas, but so does Hill Studios, and they're the ones that came up with this and the location. Line of sight, we could probably bring forward, but I don't want anybody to bump the curb and knock down.
Exactly. I'm thinking VDOT may have something to say there.
I'm sure they do, but outside there, outside there right away, they've got very little to say. And then the last, I'm sorry, go ahead.
When we discussed the sign before, I think it was Ray that Burger that said that brick was more similar to the the building materials in our area.
Right, but then when I presented the two mock-ups, one with brick, one with cobblestone unanimously, we heard that the brick didn't look the way we wanted it to look. I can re resend. I can send that to you again. No problem.
Remember that.
Yeah.
This is right.
And then last but not least, it's not written on your report, but the the deed for nine Watson, remember, we owned it after we bought it for all those times, and we donated it to Habitat for Humanity. The deed has transferred completely at this point, so it's their property. He is going to kindly send us a schedule, and they're going to be moving forward more quickly than probably we have on many other northeast projects. So. Lastly, you'll see the police report in there. What I've asked him to do is give us this report and show the previous month so that we can see increase, decrease, just so that we have some sense of the direction that we're going. That's all for me. Thank you.
Any questions, Ramon?
Excellent.
You do?
Go ahead. I do have a couple of questions. Matt, on the budget. First question, when you're showing the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, all the the historical numbers, are those year-to-date or are those for the whole year?
Those are for the whole year.
Okay. Two other minute questions. Where are you pulling and what expenditure are you hitting when you're giving grant matches to Main Street?
Well, it's in council.
Okay, because right now you're showing that you've already distributed twenty-one thousand, which was the contribution for this year, and you just cut us a check for sixteen seven fifty in November as well.
That may just simply not have hit my numbers, but I'll I'll look into it.
And the other one is is kind of picky and like that, too. If you look at administrative expenditures right at the bottom of your revenue page.
Could you give us page numbers?
Oh, I'm sure, sure. So that was thirty-three, and now I'm looking at thirty thirty-four. You didn't put any wages year-to-date for admin.
No, thank you.
Is there a way that I could get the report that comes out of Southern Software?
I can give you anything you want.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of other questions that I can ask you offline.
Yeah, any other questions, Ramon?
Yes.
Okay.
On page thirty-three, the percentage of year completed, now we're talking the end of November, says forty-two percent. Yes.
That can't be right, can it?
Yeah. Let's November.
Starting in July.
Yeah.
December, five months.
Yeah, we should be fifty percent in in January.
But just a little under fifty percent.
Okay.
It didn't seem right.
Okay.
Time flies.
Any other questions?
Wait a minute, I think I might have had one more. Hang on. Nope, I think it was the same thing as Lisa asked about the the, oh, no, it was this one. The eighty-two thousand five hundred for Main Street. If I remember right, that includes the the grants that we applied for, right?
Yeah, that's the total possible revenue and expenditures. So that's what.
I asked that last month, and that's what we were told. It was the grants.
Okay.
Under Building and Streets, I see that our expenditures are at seventy percent versus forty-two percent, so we're a little running a little.
Well, a little bit of that is, can you tell me which page you're looking at?
Forty-one.
Yeah, in the repairs and maintenance, and in this, that line includes one of those capital items that you allowed for purchases from the reserves, and I haven't put the offsetting revenue up top because buildings.
What item was that?
I'd have to go back and look for you.
Yeah, because that's where the bulk of it comes from, is repairs and maintenance.
Any other, anything? Okay. All right, council comments. Paul, your last shot here?
Absolutely, absolutely. Of course, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. This is my last meeting. I was appointed for six months, like the yogurt in your refrigerator. I have a best use by date, and mine is December thirty-first of this year. I would like to say, actually, I'd like to to compliment the town manager and his staff for their kindness, their competence, and in fact, their willingness to help someone learn and be transparent in what they're doing and how they're doing. I'd also like to compliment council members Marino, Holdren, Oswald, and Knoc for doing a difficult job, that doing it with the best of intention, doing it competently with kindness and incredible transparency also. That that we don't always agree on the outcomes, but there are always very good reasons for it, and I think we're very lucky to have these folks on town council. And I haven't mentioned the mayor, and the same goes for the mayor. The competence, the kindness, the transparency in the work that he puts into the position is, I think, something that we as town citizens should appreciate, and I'm the first to applaud you.
I want to echo your gratitude to everybody who was involved in any kind of way in the Christmas in an Ancock events, from the trees at Car Place to the parade, to the homes tour. We had a good crowd for Cokesbury Christmas music. The art show, artisans at the school, the two free movies, Thursday night and Sunday afternoon were both well-attended. Sue was at both. And like everybody else, I think I'm leaving something out, but it was it was everything seemed to go smoothly and and bring in a lot of excitement. So thanks and compliments.
I have a question for the town manager. It's, well, I just want to say, I know we're looking, we're looking at this out-of-town rate and all the all that HRSD is going to do for the for the local citizens. However, I've noticed an increase in the water costs in town. I'm comparing two months now to three months before, and basically what I found is eighty-seven dollars is about what we're billing for two months. This is a a minimum-use person, eighty-seven dollars, as opposed to for three months was a hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Wrong. Well, you can say wrong.
Excuse me?
That was for still two months. One eleven eighty-seven was our previous minimum.
Okay.
And now it's thirty dollars less at eighty-seven sixty.
So that was two months?
Was both were two months.
Okay, then I don't have a question for the town.
Excellent. The the rate went up three percent at the beginning of the year, which was July.
Okay.
And that was the only increase.
Eleven was a long time, but I didn't.
It was a long time.
Just for two months. And thank you, and no, no comment.
Well, since I come late in the comments, I I want to just say ditto about the the Christmas efforts with a particular mention of the the lights that you and Matt and I think Jake maybe put on the buildings. They were phenomenal. Great idea. Thank you. The other thing, I have a very personal shout-out for the fire company. Over the weekend, my youngest cat got about twenty-five or thirty feet up in a pine tree. And bless their hearts. They came and got my my silly cat down after she absolutely refused to move. And I, so particularly, B W James climbed that extension ladder and snagged my kitten and got on back down, and they were, they were great. I just want to publicly thank them.
I'm thrilled to hear the Habitat House is moving forward, and Mr. Smith, I think I agree with everything you said. Thanks for the heads up on the problem here that we're having. And I've often asked for another police officer. I agree with you. If there is an uncovered shift, we do not have, of course, the issue is finding a police officer. I don't know the logistics of that, but I know for years we had five, and now we have four. And and also, I have to say, that was a beautiful Christmas parade. When the Shikatik ponies showed up, we knew we really went over the top. Thank you to all involved.
Okay. One thing, the trees that are that we've got a benefactor donating to the town, they have also reached out to me, and so I just wanted to make sure that I understood where we were, because I, my, my, what my response was is the tree board has been asked to chime in as well as the property owners. Is that correct?
Yes, I was pretty sure. The tree board has been requested to say which tree would be most successful in that location and in that environment and when they should plant it for that same reason. And then the building owner has been approached, and she just simply asked if she could name the location of where those trees went. And so those two are outstanding. There's nothing to be done at this point, other than basically wait for tree board to meet.
Are they're they're not in session during the winter, right?
Correct.
Okay, so springish.
Donor that were, what's going on?
Sure.
Because he's asked me about it.
He's asked me, and I've responded with what I just told you.
That's fine.
Yes.
Great, okay, then we're covered.
The other thing is, I've also had some people reach out to me about the northeast project that the A M P D C is administering on our behalf. Can we get Eric Lachansky in here in January and have an update report so we know what where the disconnect is?
Well, the dis, I could speak to that. I'm on that. The disconnect at this point is, is Clinton here?
No.
Oh, he was, okay. We've applied for another grant of one and a half million dollars because there wasn't funds to cover the pre, the first grant. They're saying it was COVID and prices went up and everything. The committee is not pleased, I will tell you that, and we have expressed that, and I think Matt has also. We asked Eric for a complete report, and what you got back. So by January, you will have a complete report of where, what we originally planned, what has been accomplished, and what we hope to accomplish in the future, and hope to see some progress.
So so the first grant has already been expended? Or are we still in the middle of that as well?
All of that. The reason that we, they, I'm sorry, applied on our behalf was the sidewalks that connect Market Street and up to Watson, and then.
On Pine.
On Pine, and then pretty much that's it. So those sidewalks are very, very expensive.
There is no car street to boundary included in the project.
That's right, no, that one.
Which is very unfortunate.
It is, it is. That would be a a real positive. So hopefully, we could be able to get that done.
And I just wanted.
It's been very frustrating.
I just wanted to thank O B C A. I think they did a phenomenal job getting the hall, and I know they've been planning for months and months and months, and man did it pay off. I was a docent. I had a fabulous time. Everybody that was on the tour was just so engaged and pleasant and excited to be here, and I just, I love that. So thank you, guys, so very, very much. I know Matt was also very much in part of that, and big thank you to to for your volunteer hours. And I just want to say, thanks for having me, guys.
We have, we need emotions to go into closed session. Somebody have that?
I move that we enter closed session to discuss personnel matters as stated in State Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one and real estate matters as permitted by Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A three.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.